Good evening. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session for Monday, January 7th, 2019. I'll call the meeting to order. Our first item on the agenda is a moment of silence in remembrance of Barry Allison, a Cabarrus County Schools bus driver for J.M. Robinson High School who passed away recently. Thank you. Board, it's time to adopt the agenda tonight. I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Aye.
Is it Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Made the motion. Mr. Sheumaker made the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes seven zero. Move on to our first report, which is an update on the Beverly Hills Elementary School site review, and we'll call on Mr. Barry Sheumaker and Mrs. Carolyn Carpenter to give us an update.
Thank you, Ms. Furtinball. And Ms. Carpenter and I took time to go through eight proposals that we received, and I will reiterate that each one of these proposals was very good. We thought very highly of all the submissions. We did narrow it down to three, and so those will be available to the board members later tonight. We'll be able to provide those to you. And I'll let Ms. Carpenter say, would she, if she has some comments to make? Ms. Carpenter, would you, if you have any comments? Sorry to catch you off guard.
No, they're okay. I agree with Mr. Sheumaker. We got eight wonderful, I mean, they were all, I mean, any of the eight would've been very good proposals. We, Mr. Sheemaper, Mr. Sheumaker, excuse me, put together a rubric, and we had, what, was it, five or six criteria that we put together?
We had six criteria.
Six criteria.
And each of you has a copy of that.
Of that. And we graded them, and it was, and he graded his and I graded mine, and then we kind of come together, and when we added the numbers up, we were within one point of each other, but we did it separately. And we, it was, it was kind of ironic because when we come together, we, we kind of, it came within one point of each other, the three that we come up with. So we were kind of all on the same page, but when we added them all up, they were all very close, but the, the three that come shook out were the top three that we kind of all agreed on. And what it boiled down to, the three that we bought fourth, I was very, they all wanted community input. They all agreed that was very important. The three that we bought fourth, they had all did sites or built buildings on small sites. They all had, two of them especially, had experience in buildings, had, did ones that had historical, one particular one had, did a building 1924, had renovated it, and did a building with that. Also, one of the individuals had gone out, looked at the site, the current site. All these things I thought were very important. Two of the ones that we have bought for, they're local companies or want, and have individuals that actually live in Cabarrus County. So I think all those things were important factors. And again, all of, majority of them have, have done work for Cabarrus County before, and we're familiar with them, and I think all those things are important factors. And some of them actually have people that live in Cabarrus County, and I think that's very important, that are residents of Cabarrus County. So we looked at all these particular things, but I think we were fortunate to have eight people that were interested in it.
Okay, so next steps, Mr. Sheumaker?
Well, next steps is, I will make the, Ms. Carpenter and I both have copies of the three, and there's some additional copies available in our board clerk's office, and so after the meeting tonight, I'll, for the board members that wish to, want to review the three, so they don't have a whole lot of reading to do, we'll, we'll distribute those, and they're enough for everybody to have a copy of their own, so of each one of the three.
Are we saying what those three are? Are we going to hold it to the next?
We'll, we'll hold that because we want to make sure that everyone agrees. We don't want to, and, and, you know, we have other copies if you want to look at the others, but, you know, I'd prefer you go through the three that we have, and then look at that. And then next week, we, we should be prepared to make a, make an assessment of which one we want to go with, recommendation.
Okay, so board members, if you would get any questions to Mr. Sheumaker and Mrs. Carpenter by Thursday evening, so that they have time to get those answers back to you about anything they observed or no additional information, and then we want to be prepared to vote next Monday.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, anything else on this topic? Okay, next, we'll welcome Mr. Matthew Cropper. And Ms. Reimer, are you going to join him, or it's up to you? You can stay there.
I'm staying there.
Welcome, Matthew. Mr. Cropper's come back to talk with us about the results of the realignment committee, and has a presentation for us this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Louder. First of all.
There we go. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Louder, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm here tonight to give you an overview on the recommendations that was made on behalf of the realignment committee. It's a culmination of months of, and countless hours of work made by volunteers and a lot of review, and really proud of the work that they've done over the last eight to 10 months. A little bit, a little bit about who we are, because I know there's some new members on the board, but I'll just go quickly. We are Cropper GIS Consulting, McKibben Demographics. We are, we're the facilitator and the consultant who manage the project, the realignment project that we're recommending to you tonight on behalf of the committee. So we do this kind of work all over the country, work with districts all over of different sizes, and we bring to the table expertise on what has and what hasn't worked, and then as well as the technology piece, and being able to make accurate and informed decisions with the use of, of good technology. We were, we were tasked to do this study because the district is in the midst of a capital plan to add capacity to, to, to support increasing enrollment and improve facilities. Primarily looking at fall 2020 was the year that we were looking at as a committee, incorporating the new West Cabarrus High School, the new Hickory Ridge Elementary School, as well as Beverly Hills being vacated for the purpose of this additional study that you guys have been talking about. In addition to the new construction, there are imbalances in utilization. Some schools are overcrowded, some had some available space, not a whole lot, there's not a whole lot of space in your district, but in addition to accounting for the new schools and building zones around those, we were looking at trying to address imbalances in utilization as well. And that, that as a, as a whole required us as a group and as a district to look at a comprehensive study. So we, we explored this through a community-based process and focused on options that, that best meet the realignment criteria. So we were, in preparation for the study, we were tasked to do several things. We developed some supporting materials. We did a 10-year population enrollment forecast, and then working through this, through a process that we have found to be very successful, and, and working with the community and engaging the community through this study, and empowering all stakeholders with the ability to provide input and, and feedback. A little bit about the criteria, these criteria are what we, I always brought them back to the committee and reminded them that, that the best plan is going to be one that adheres to these criteria as a whole. No plan is ever going to be perfect, in my experience, that you're going to have pros and cons with any particular set of boundaries, but the best plan will be one that, that addresses these criteria as best as possible. And these are to balance school facility utilization, so try to make things as equitable as possible across the district. Not only looking at, we're, the students, student day that we have now and the schools that you have, but we're also accounting for the loss of elementary seats that you're going to get as a, as a result of the class size reduction laws that are going in place with the state. And so we had to, we accounted for that reduced capacity to elementary schools when we, when we did this study to, so that you could be proactive from that standpoint. Account for future growth, not only looking at where the currents, the kids live now, but focusing on where our populations are growing and where our populations declining or stable. So we have, we looked at some of that as part of, as, as part of our work to try to be as proactive as possible. Looking at close proximity, trying to assign students as close to school as home as possible, knowing that that's, that's not always achievable, but it was something that we certainly looked at and discussed in detail. Maximizing busing efficiency and transportation, trying to, trying to, if you assign students closer to home and an efficient route, you're going to have efficient bus transportation, and it's going to save on costs. Clear feeder patterns, so we did look and discussed in detail about the impact of, of new schools on feeder patterns, and that's how much of an elementary school goes to a middle school, and how much of a middle school then progresses to a high school. If you, if all of an elementary school goes to the same middle school, then that's 100% feeder pattern alignment. And in this case, in this district, what we found is with the new schools, with the, where they were being placed and the seats and just the geography of the district, we couldn't achieve 100% feeder pattern continuity. So you, you will see that elementary schools or middle schools are split as they go to high school, but just know that the committee did discuss for countless hours in looking at feeders, and every single meeting there were adjustments made to try to better align these, this plan and the recommendation with feeder patterns, with the future, the, the next school levels for the kids. Allow for the highest grade at current school grandfathering, and this is something I told the, the committee, this wasn't really their, their purview, this is more of a policy decision by the board, but it's something that's on the criteria, and it's common, we see it commonly. Minimize the impact on students. Consider economic, cultural, and ethnic diversity, so looking at demographics. Try to establish contiguous zones, so don't create satellite zones or little small pockets and move in one small community out of a, of a community away, past a couple of schools to another school, creating a, a satellite zone per se. Use major roads and natural boundaries wherever feasible to define attendance zones. So these are the criteria that we were looking at, and, and we, the committee was aligned with these and as they were considering their recommendation. So this is, just gives you an overview of the timeline, and you could see the work, the work began January of last year. So this is about a year, a year-long process with the preparation leading into the committee work, and, which brings us to here tonight. A little overview on the committee's progress and the work that's been done to date. The committee met eight times since May 2018, spent many hours between meetings reviewing information and, and studying the options. They reviewed more than 12 variations of options since the process began. Started with two elementary, middle, and high school draft options, and then additional options were generated based on study and discussion and feedback from the committee and also the public. They looked at all kinds of information that was basically helped support decision-making as it relates to the criteria, enrollment capacity, demographics, feeder pattern data, impacts, as well as ongoing stream of information that the public has, was providing from the start. I've told the committee that options are draft throughout this process, and they are still in draft form until a board approves a plan. These, this recommendation is still considered a draft, and I've, I've told the, the committee Help from the public, the public has been very engaged during this process. They provided ongoing input throughout the entire course of the study. Thousands of emails have been received through the feedback form, those, that information was shared with the committee and the public. They were, public was welcome to observe the committee meetings, and they, we'd had, we'd had public members at every single meeting, looking at, watching over the work that was being done by the committee. And all the materials that we shared with the committee have been shared online, so any member of the public could download and print off any materials that the committee had been, had in front of them as well. We have interactive map as well that, that allows the public to zoom in on an area, toggle on and off options, and that interactive map now shows the recommendation and then option There were three public information sessions that were scheduled throughout the course of the study. We had a, at the beginning of the study, we had a public information session just to orient the public on what was coming and the, the work that was about to, about to commence, and how they could participate. We met in August about midway through the process to share some draft options with the public, to give them an idea of what, what is being considered in the draft form and to get some additional feedback. We had about 150 people attend that session, and 800 respondents participated in an online survey. The third session was held in November, and we did another update to the public. The committee had narrowed down their focus to a couple of options, and that's what we shared with them in, in November. We had 100 people attend that session, and 181 respondents participated in the online survey. So with, with the committee and also the public, the public was very engaged in this process, and it's, in our experience, this was a, a normal amount of participation that we saw. It was a, a good amount, a healthy amount to be able to, to get input and valuable input from the public. And the public gave us comments that drove changes to the maps, things that maybe the committee may not have seen, that the public said, oh, well, you know, this, you're, this area, this road is closed over here now, and you can't go that way, so maybe look at moving the, moving the lines or sending kids to another area. And those kind of, that kind of input and feedback is what we really were hungry for and was very helpful for the committee as they continued their work. So the work just leading to the recommendations, I wanted to bring you to sort of the, from the November 7th on. If you're interested in seeing things, all the options that were previously considered, you can go to the realignment page. Every single meeting is, is on there, and there are links to all the options that were considered, meeting by meeting. So if you're really interested in seeing the history and how the options evolved, you can go back and look at that, and it could be, it can be informative. But at November, the November 7th public information session, the committee had narrowed down to two options, options one and two is what they were called. And they were chosen by the committee at their seventh, at their seventh meeting, and they, as these options, they felt best met the criteria and objectives. At the December 4th committee meeting, it was their final meeting, we brought back the two options that were shared with the public, and the committee looked at those, evaluated them, the feedback, and they made a few other adjustments to the options with a focus on the criteria. Some adjustments to feeder patterns and balancing utilization were made at that final meeting. Most of the adjustments were made to option one, but there were adjustments made to option two as well. And when it was all said and done, after the committee felt like they, they were comfortable with adjustments to, to, to make the, the options as best as they could be, they, they took a vote. And the committee voted on option one as the, the plan they feel best, best meets their objectives and criteria. And option two, it had one vote from a committee member, and, but we brought it, we're bringing option two to you just so you can see what the second option looks like and what the committee, what, you know, the, the final two options that the committee had considered. And so, but option one is, is the option, and if you look at the materials in the, in the handouts, that's been renamed as ES recommendation, or the MS recommendation, or the high school recommendation. This, this is a plan, so the elementary recommendation is paired with the middle and the high school recommendation. So, and the reason, the reason is, is that if you, you have to look at them in sync, because if you, if you don't look at them in sync, you possibly make some small feeder pattern splits and other things like that. Not to say that if you as a board like, recommended for one level, but the option two for another level, we couldn't merge things or make some adjustments to make it fit, but the, these are designed as a pairing, so that the recommendation is, comes to you as an elementary, middle, and high school plan, and option two is an elementary, middle, and high school plan. This is the, the recommended zones that you could see on the screen, and when you look at this, you could see the, the black outline shows you the current zones, and then the background color is the, is the recommendation. And you'll see, you'll notice the green area in the southwestern corner of the district, of the southern part, that is the new Hickory Ridge Elementary School. And so I'm going to point at it with a laser pointer here, but this is the new Hickory Ridge Elementary School zone, and you could see that, you know, this is the black, this blackout line is the Harrisburg line currently, so a little bit of Harrisburg got sent into Hickory Ridge to give Harrisburg relief. Patriots, this all used to be Patriots in here, and this was moved out of Patriots into Hickory Ridge. And then Patriots picked up students in the north outside of their zone to help balance and provide as much relief as possible. You'll see also in the north, there's some area added out of Cox Mill to give them relief into Odell. And in most of the action and most of the, the adjustments in the elementary level were made up in the Cox Mill-Odel area and then down around the new elementary school. There were other scenarios that were considered throughout the course that moved a lot more students than this, but when it was all said and done, the committee felt like this was the best option to give as much relief as possible, and, and this is what they, they have recommended. When you look at these tables, I wanted to break this down for you. When you look at these, you can see the school name is the, is the first column. The option capacity is the capacity number that we were working off of, and that incorporates the, the new House bill, class size reductions in those capacity numbers. Total enrolled is the, is 2017-18 enrollment, which, we started this in January of 18, so the data that we worked with through the course of this was the 17-18 enrollment numbers. So the, that column shows you the total enrolled. The next column says ES recommendation, estimated enrollment, so that is the recommendation that's being made by the committee. And then option two is the secondary, the second option that, the, the second option that made it to the final meeting. So when you look at the tables and the documents, anything that says recommendation in the title is the, is the actual recommended numbers or whatever the statistic is, and option two is the, is the second option. That was tweaked a little bit from the November meeting on option two, but it's, it's the option two revised that we're calling it. So we presented, I'm showing you information, the same information that was presented to the committee in, in terms of format. So we looked at things in terms of total number of students. So the first table that you'll see just shows the raw numbers in terms of estimated number of students. So you can get a, this will help you understand, how many students are you talking about at a building in the recommendation? You can compare that to the total enrolled, and you can see where we, where, where those numbers differ. The, the next slide shows utilization percentage, and this is one that I, that I prefer because it kind of shows your enrollment as it relates to capacity. So you could look at the current enrollment. In the white column shows you utilization across the board of your schools, and then the, the teal is the recommended utilization. So you could see that there are a lot of imbalances and a lot of overcrowding in current schools, and the recommendation does bring things much more into balance and brings a lot of relief whenever we could provide it. There are schools that are still overcrowded, and, but I think that the committee had kind of resolved that, that this realignment is not going to solve all of the overcrowding concerns and issues that this district is facing. And they did the best they could to leverage the space that was added to the district and help provide relief, but one thing they, they don't want to do is they didn't want to move students, provide relief to one school, and then end up overcrowding another building. So they were very careful with that. The demographic data is, is, was studied and presented, so you could see how the, the impact on demographics of any particular school as it relates to the recommendation. Student impacts, so you could see that in the recommendation, 1,218 elementary students are impacted. That's not too bad when you, when you consider that of that is, of that is our students attending the new school. So of that 1,200, 700 of that 1,200 are actually students that are attending the new, the new school. So they're going to be impacted regardless because we needed to fill that school and help provide relief. And when you look at these tables, you see the tan-colored lines show you where students were moved and how many students were moved from one school to another. So that tan, those tan lines, if you, you break those down, the, you can see where, which, where the movement was and, and what, how many students were moved to different schools. This is the feeder pattern chart. The, the current feeder patterns from elementary and middle school are shown on the left side, and then the recommendation are shown on the right. You could see that, you see the chart just in looking at the length of the chart. On the left, your current zones compared to the recommendation. I, I feel like the committee did clean up feeder patterns a lot from elementary to middle, and that you could see the chart is smaller, which is indicative of fewer splits. They, they did their best to try to provide as much balance in splitting if they had to split, and, and they, they talked about feeder pattern splits a, a lot in, throughout all the committee meetings, in addition to the other data. This is the middle school recommendation that, that they have provided, which basically aligns with elementary recommendation. So you'll see some common lines and look at areas, and when you look at a line for a, a boundary, you can go back to the elementary line, and most likely that line will follow the same line as an elementary, which may explain why a line may be shaped one way or the other. And the data is being presented as well in the same format as elementaries. The recommendation is the teal colored, it's called MS recommended. And then just one thing I'll note, when you look at the utilization, you could see your imbalance in utilization currently in your middle schools, and if you compare that to the recommendation, you could see how the middle schools have been brought to much more of equitable use of space across all of your middle schools compared to, and given some relief to some of the schools that needed it the most. The demographic data and impact data was also studied and shared, which is being presented to you tonight. The middle school has 528 students would be impacted as a result of the middle school adjustments in the recommendation. Middle school to high school shows you the feeder patterns, just like I showed with elementaries, and you could see how the middle schools to the high school, from the current to the recommended, how they, how they are impacted. You'll see there are more, more splits now than what you currently have, but with the nature of adding another high school into the, into this district, it was very hard to, to not have as many, as few splits as what you have currently. And, but I would just, will say that, that we did study feeder patterns, and, and the committee did their best looking at feeder patterns and, without compromising other elements of the criteria. High school recommendation is shown here, so you could see the, the yellow zone in the center of your district is the West Cabarrus, the new West Cabarrus High School zone, and which had, which pulled from, from schools all adjacent to it pretty much. And, and so you could see that, that, you know, a lot of students were impacted in this, but, but this was a really good zone in that it provided a lot of relief to all of the schools that surround it. Again, the utilization and enrollment, and I just point you to the balance of utilization that exists as a result of the recommendation, and that there is a good balance of utilization across, across the district and, and through the work of the committee. Demographics and impacts, 2,334, I think that number is, is the number of high school students that would be impacted as a result of this, of this study. And, yes. And just to, just to note again, like I did with the elementary, that of that 2,300, you're, you're, includes the new high school, which all, every single student at the new high school is counted in that, and that's 1,593. So if you put that in perspective, it's, it's a lot of students impacted, but, but you need to, you, you're, you should expect to move that many with the new building coming So what are the next steps? The committee's work is done, and they have, we have, we have adjourned the committee at, not, not to meet again, and they are very happy that they, that their, their work has come to closure, very appreciative and, of the work, and they understand the, the hard work. We do have a lot of committee members here in the audience tonight, and I thank you guys for coming out and showing support for, for this, this recommendation. Next steps are us as a consultant, Cropper GIS is, is here to assist the school board in understanding the recommendations in any way. If there's anything that we can do to help, we work through, through Ms. Reimer, and, but if you guys have any questions, you can filter it through Ms. Reimer, and we would be happy to answer any questions and help familiarize you with the recommendation. If you have any questions or want to know how, how or what, and, and any, any, anything we can do, we're here to help. The school board can vote on a plan whenever The school board can vote on a plan whenever you are ready. The public has been told it's that it's to be determined. But the board is expected to to vote sometime in March 2019. So in a couple of months is what the expectation is from the from the public and also the committee. Implementation isn't until fall 2020. But it would be good to finalize a plan and have the board vote on a plan as soon as possible. Several reasons for this is that the the district can start making preparations for the transition. And a lot of work goes into routing buses and notifying parents and staffing and things like that. And and also as important is the public has been stirred up in this process. They've been providing a lot of input, a lot of changes happened. And the public is, you know, they're kind of walking on eggshells right now, or they have been over the last year, not showing, not sure where they're going to go. And I think that one of the things I've seen in my experience is that it's good to bring this to closure for the for the benefit of the public so that they can have some finality to this process in that they don't have to, they don't have to be uncertain for the for for an undetermined amount of time. So so it's it's always good, once a plan has been recommended by by committee, to have the board process work to to approve a plan so that the the public can take a breath. And even if they are impacted, they know where they may, where they're going to land. And so that's 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 my recommendation. But with that said, that's all I have in my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, board members, any immediate questions? I know we can all use the interactive maps. And I sent you some instructions on how I was taught by Mr. Cropper to use those maps when I had a gazillion questions over time. But I would like to talk about dates. So any questions on what Mr. Cropper's presented first?
Madam Chair, I do have a quick question since we're kind of new to this. How many people sat on that initial committee?
We had 28 on the on the initial committee.
So with 13 voting, one
14, there were, I'm sorry, I'll let you finish.
Yeah, I was going to say 13 voting for and one against. Do you think if there had been, just say all 28, there may could have been a reverse in the decision?
You know, that I I knew that I knew that question was probably going to come up because we had a 28 member committee and we ended with, the last meeting had 15 members there. One of the things I'll say is, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the committee, but this group was very cohesive. There was, sometimes we do these studies and there's a big divide. You've got sort of one side of the table, another side of the table, and it's always a sort of a half and half kind of divide. What I've noticed that wasn't, that wasn't the dynamic in this committee. This committee worked together as a team in most cases to talk about a plan. And they they discussed their considerations, their concerns, and they and they they convinced each other whether to make a change or not to make a change. And I think, I really feel like if the full committee would have been there at the last meeting, the the results would have been very similar to what you see here. Just because of that dynamic, that they 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 all seemed to be working towards an end, an end goal. And and it seemed to me like in some of the preliminary considerations, some of the preliminary discussions. And we did some what we call sticker exercises where the committee got to put a sticker. They felt the 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 top two scenarios or three scenarios, they felt met the criteria. And that helped us narrow down scenarios for the second community information, public information session. And that the all the stickers seemed to land in in sort of a pattern that looked like there was a consensus amongst the group.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, one question I had, I I noticed that Odell, you had it with capacity, I mean, way up there. When you were doing your data, did you update it one time or did you continuously update it? And the reason I ask that, just recently, the city council approved a very large parcel out there right at Odell School, which is going to be mixed density. It's going to, it's going to really put more people right there at Odell School. And I didn't know if you had that data included in this study.
Okay, so we worked with this fall 2017-18 data from the start. And we carried that through the course of the study with the committee. There are a lot of things that are going on in 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 Cabarrus County. A lot of, a lot of things that we, that weren't on our radar, that 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 popped up. And what I, what I'd say to that, to that regard for Odell is that Odell utilization went up because Cox Mill is overcrowded. Cox Mill was at a around 110%. Yeah, 110% utilized. So the thought was to give Cox Mill some relief and Odell had some available space. They were, they were running at about 88% in 17-18. And so the the, so the thought was to balance utilization between those two schools. If if we weren't to do that and we were to leave Odell as it is right now, they may absorb that. They may be able to better absorb that new growth that's going on near there. But then you have Cox Mill down at 110%. And there's new subdivisions that are going in there as well and new developments that are bringing in a lot of students. I don't know if it's as many as the Odell, but enough to bring Cox Mill up, raise their needle up much higher. So I think it was the the trying to provide some relief and balance utilization, knowing that each of these school zones in some of certain areas, there's still going to be ongoing growth. And if the if the growth, as the growth continues, this this process kind of leveled out utilization, equalized utilization. Now, as new growth continues, that utilization will just grow more equitably as opposed to having one be at 120%, another one ending at 95%.
Okay, board members, any other questions right now? Okay. Yes, sir.
You've got the Beverly Hills closed here as vacated. Is all those, do all those go, where do they go?
The assumption was that all Beverly Hills students would attend Royal Oaks Elementary School. And that was, that was the assumption that was made when that decision was made for for Beverly Hills to be vacated.
So if it's not vacated, then there's capacity at Royal Oaks, is that what you're saying?
Um, if it's, well, if it's not vacated, there there would be some of some more capacity at Royal Oaks. Yes, sir.
Probably have other questions, I'll just, I'll wait.
So from a standpoint of getting to an eventual decision, we need to schedule a public hearing. One thought is to have it at the work session in February. We've done that many times in the past. Or to schedule a separate section. So not to pick a date right now because staff would have to check calendars and we'd have to schedule things. And I'll just tell you, I'm slightly in favor of doing it at the work session because everything would be recorded for people who aren't here. If we have it separately, it will not be recorded. So the rest of the community would not be able to see the Q and A. So not to slant your opinion, but I think it's important to let as many people as possible hear the Q and A. So. So do you think you'll have time to study and kind of learn a little bit more about the recommendation? And then look at the February 4th work session potentially?
I'd kind of like to see a separate meeting for this because of the, I mean, the amount.
You're okay with it not being taped?
I'm okay with it not being taped. We do record comments and it's not really a back and forth. It's really a
Yeah, it's just
They provide their information. If we're doing a good recording job, that information should be available.
Well, it won't be minute, it won't be word for word. So as far as application.
Understand, understand.
Yeah. Other thoughts? Laura, it looked like you were okay with work session. Okay, Holly? Either way. Yes. Your thoughts?
Well, when will we get a chance to have a conversation more about, to bring up our questions together about this study? Now that we've got the options to look at. Were you thinking of having that in that work session as well?
We could do that at the work session, yes. And then we will, we would still have the business meeting and another work session before we would eventually vote in March. So we would have several opportunities for meetings as well as you can always, you know, package your questions into an email, so.
I would entertain the work session.
Okay. Ms. Carpenter, your thoughts?
Well, I mean, I mean, ways fine because I'd like to get the the input from the public. Also, I mean, besides what we have as a comment, I would
Besides what we have as a comment, I'd like to get the input from the public.
Oh, we absolutely will.
They would, you know, they may have some suggestions to say, hey, I mean, because looking at, you know, what borders. I mean, a lot of times I like to use our main corridors as borders. You know, I don't like to cross interstates. I don't like to cross main thoroughfares. I like to have a nice cut. And and, you know, I want to look at that. And a lot of times like to use, you know, now that we're bit, you know, this, this one's right in my backyard, in your backyard.
Yeah.
Uh, and, you know,
I'm the end of a district, one way or the other.
Yeah. And, you know, and when I originally looked at it, I see them going straight down Weddington Road and going straight down. And they go down and they jump out and get one subdivision, but then they don't do anything else. And I don't quite understand that strategy.
You can send that question in.
And and why do they just not take that whole whole corridor? I don't quite understand that strategy. You know, it seems like you just go down and take that whole road and stop from one end to the other.
Mr. Cropper, I believe you met with transportation, right?
Yes, I did.
To to look at their proposals.
Yes, ma'am, I did. And I think that, I'm not sure which area, are you referring to the high school zones?
Yes, and I, that's what I don't understand with, I mean, it seems like, well, that high school is on Weddington Road. Okay, and that's what I don't understand why they just jumped out and Carriage Downs.
And picked up a subdivision.
It's where I said, drugs, you know, jumped out and grabbed, you know, Carriage Downs. And we've got quite a few subdivisions on that road. You've got, you know, Tamar, you've got Freedom Acres, you've got, you know, a lot of them. Why not just pick up everything, go from Pitt School to
Yeah, if you remember, Carriage Downs has always been our challenge ever since we built Robinsons. That's a long time ago because it has two entrances. But King's Crossing and Gable Oaks don't, and Tamar doesn't. You know, the Carriage Downs goes through. So I know that has always, and it's so large that you really can't split it. There's no nice street to split in the middle and you won't want to do that. So, yeah, that has always been a challenged neighborhood for us for redistricting.
But the same way you've got, but just make it real simple. Pitt School to 29, I mean, just all the way over. Just take everything to 29.
I believe part of what you were looking at was going on the major corridors.
We looked at ma- major roads were a part of it. And all the criteria was, there's a call, every, for every action, there's a reaction. And so, you know, if you wanted to keep all of that in, say, West Cabarrus High School and make it look more aligned with a highway, for example, what the reaction to that is that it creates a bigger imbalance in utilization of your two, of the two high schools. And also could create a more of a less, a lesser balanced split of the feeder patterns from middle to high school as well. So there's, there's always an answer. I I know what, I think I know which area you're talking about, how the West Cabarrus kind of has a piece cut out of it that stays at Northwest Cabarrus. And that was something that the committee talked a lot about. I mean, every single change that you see in here, they really studied and looked at. Well, you know, the same kind of things you're thinking about, well, why wouldn't you just do this and instead move the line over here? They went through that whole, the whole course of of exploring that through the course of it. And I think that the committee understood that, you know, okay, if we do that, it causes more negative impacts than positive. And that's what the rationale for not pursuing an option that looks different than what's been recommended.
Because one of the things that was, of course, we went through a lot of, we've been through, as you've probably been through, a lot of redistrictings. I remember when they pulled out years ago, Ms. Furtinball, remember when, when Autumn Cha, no, it was, what was it? Laurel Park was pulled out to go to Northwest. She remembers it. Do I, a few of us remember that. But that was pulled out to go Northwest. But and it was right down the street from Winkler. But but that, you know, it's, and and it was discussed about crossing highways because at that time it was crossing 73. And factors were taken into consideration about how how it's dangerous crossing major intersections. At that time, there'd been three deaths at 73. And so that's why we talk about the, how crossing intersections and how dangerous it can be. So you look at 73, 29, those type of things. And so when you're talking about going to Robinson, they've got to cross, from our side of town, they've got to cross 29. So that's why I was wondering if that had been taken into consideration.
Yes, ma'am, it it had been. They were, they looked at major roads in detail and determining, trying to avoid crossing major roads and aligning with major roads because that's one of the criteria. They were certainly looking at that. But I think that what they found was, is if you try to just focus only on major roads, you start to deviate from the other criteria. So if you have a zone, if you have a plan that just all follows major roads, you start having greater imbalances in utilization. Some schools are much greater overcrowded and some are, would end up being underutilized just because of the nature of communities that have built out and how many kids live in the different subdivisions across the county. It it makes it a challenge to try to align perfectly with with something like roads, for example.
So you're giving each criteria equal weight, is that what you're saying?
Each criteria was was given equal weight. The utilization was one that's kind of a, since utilization is an objective and a criteria, utilization kind of rose to the top. And looking at balancing, building utilization, that was looked at, I would say, a little bit with a little bit heavier weight than the rest of them, just because it's part of the objectives as well. But yes, the, all of the criteria were looked at, sort of, I told, I told the committee, look at them all in a basket. And, you know, the best plans, one that touches on these criteria as best as possible.
Can I ask a general question?
Yes, sir.
You said that transportation reviewed the plans. Was transportation's input quantitative or just a general review of the proposals and a general consensus?
Yes, sir. They didn't run any routing numbers and say, this is what this routing miles for this option versus that. They didn't get into that kind of detail. They looked at the maps and we studied the maps. And I I showed transportation where we were making adjustments, where the committee was considering adjustments. And they would give us their gut reaction. They'd say, oh, wow, you're crossing, you're crossing over this road or there's a bottleneck at this intersection. And 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 that kind of information that that they had provided, that that I went back and shared it with the committee. And that feedback did did drive some changes to the maps based on what transportation had been telling us.
But primarily qualitative in terms of just understanding
Yes, sir.
the intent and the ramifications of each
Yes, sir.
each change. Okay, thank you.
So, you have another question?
Just again, clarification for Dr. Lauter. So this criteria, in the TRA-Go process, we rank the criteria, don't we? And here we're not, is that?
No, it was intentionally not. So they weren't using the TRA-Go process.
Okay, so they were not using that TRA-Go process?
No, we find what our consultants have used successfully in the past. So we have kind of two homework items. One, I will work with Dr. Lauter to determine, sounds like we're leaning slightly towards the work session for the hearing to see what else might be on the plate for that work session agenda, to see if we can. Typically, we do a public hearing, get a work session. We make sure the regular agenda is no more than an hour. Try to get it really narrowed down. And also, I have some ideas in my head, but thinkable about, and I'll work with Ms. Reimer, if that's okay, on how to log the board's questions so that we can really make a question answer. So something that Laura thinks of today, I may not have thought out about, but I want to hear her answer, the answer to her questions as well. So I think it'll help all of us discern because we really come from a fairly So I think it'll help all of us discern, because we really come from a fairly broad array of locations around the county, and there may be something someone spots that's a plus or minus. And keep in mind, our job is not to redo these maps after all the hard work of the committee, but rather to look for caveats, concerns, or get clarifications that you can make a confident...
But the decision rests with the board. The board can tweak this as we desire. I mean, it's nice to have the work done in the background, but ultimately, it's our decision.
We can, but keep in mind, we're not, our goal is not to redo all of the balances that they've tried to work within the criteria.
Okay, again, it's our decision from my perspective.
It is ultimately, yes. Okay, any other questions or comments this evening?
And this is mainly a comment to myself. I've learned over the years that when I have questions like this, I need to segregate my questions pertinent to the process and the committee and the expertise that we have here, separate from questions that I might have for staff, which staff can answer about bus routes and impacts to the 10-year capital plan and things of that nature. So I'm trying to get my questions formulated in my own mind, but not burden you with topics that you can't answer, but which staff in time would be able to advise us on.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Carpenter. I expect we'll probably talk to you a time or two again.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you. And like I normally do, I sometimes forget to introduce our deputy who's with us tonight. Welcome Officer Holmes from AT Allen and Mary Frances Wall Center. Thank you for being here. Board members, we'll move on to the items to consider for consent agenda. Agenda item 5.01. And first, we'll have our budget amendments.
Thank you. We have several budget amendments for you. We'll start with the state, just some minor adjustments. That first adjustment is in reference to our visiting international faculty. It's just a move from one category to the other.
Excuse me, Ms. Cuss. Thank you, committee members, for being here.
Then there's a small adjustment to our CTE for program licenses, where DPI can purchase those at a better rate for us. The charter school adjustment for EC, that's consistent with previous years. So we're right in line there. And then a nice little adjustment to our CTE, just planning versus actual. Next one's our federal fund. Mostly what you're seeing here is some additional funds that the state has awarded. They're actually grants. Okay, far enough, far enough, come back, come back. So those are grants that come from the state, mostly aligned for our EC programs. And it's really just the timing of those. They're not awarded at the beginning of the year. They just come through the year. You have a question?
I have a question on $125,000 and $127,000 on workshop expenses. What is that?
So the $125,000 is specifically for behavior support services within our EC department. And so they've applied for that type of grant, and they can spend that money only on staff development for behavior support.
How many staff for $125,000?
That's not staff. That's where we contract with organizations or folks to provide staff development to our staff.
Yeah, how many staff get to participate in that is what I guess my question was?
So I can get those. If you'll send me those questions, I'm happy to research that. And I can have that available for you. There's a Title I adjustment, small adjustment from one area to the other. The, again, the PRC 118, which is EC-related behavior support services, that actually is a DPI support position that is housed here in Cabarrus County Schools. It's just really a pass-through is what that one is. And you see the small adjustment to our language acquisition funds there. Okay, any questions on federal? Okay, we'll move on to our capital. Capital is, we're increasing our capital fund so that we could purchase the technology in advance of the West Cabarrus High School and the Hickory Ridge Elementary School, because we were anticipating significant price increases for that technology effective January 1. So the county was gracious enough to allocate those funds, and we were able to make those purchases and save a significant amount of dollars. Next is our local special. These are our grants. You can see that we have received a Corning Grant for C.C. Griffin and J. Robinson. Those teachers at those individual schools applied for those grants and received them to the total of $27,005. And then a small adjustment to our Empower Grant as that grant is closing down.
Any other questions, board members?
Just a quick question. The government shutdown, is that affecting us in any way?
Currently, there's no impact on us. Can't foresee the future, but currently, there's been no impact on us.
Okay, consent agenda, everybody good?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we'll welcome Ms. Reimer and Mrs. Burns here tonight?
Yes.
Okay. I'm looking for somebody standing up. So we, first, we have the policy revisions for approval on first reading.
Good evening. We have several policies up for first read. Policy 6420 is contracts with the board. These are recommended revisions, clarifies the superintendent's contract and authority described in second paragraph for materials, equipment, and supplies. Policy 6421 is a recommended and strongly recommended revision. It relocates statements regarding invalidity of obligations incurred in violation of statutory requirements, adds information about disbursements in Section B, updates Section C to include disbursement certificates, updates new Section C to reflect the creation of local government commission rules, divides the policy into sections for clarity, and updates legal references. Policy 8300, fiscal management standards. These are optional, add several new provisions aimed at strengthening the board's fiscal management standards. Policy 9125, participation by minority businesses. These are recommended and strongly recommended. This policy has been extensively revised to reflect current statutory requirements. Policy 1700, 4345, 6442, and 9120 are all required minor reference updates based on title changes in Policy 9125, except for that 4345, which is a formatting clarity based on our attorney recommendation.
Okay, board members, I guess, starting with the top 6420. Any questions? Are we okay for consent agenda for 6420?
Yes.
Consent? The pre-audit certification, 6421. Any questions? Consent? Okay, thank you. 8300, fiscal management standards. Any questions?
You said this one was optional, but what does it do? Let's put it that way.
I'll defer that to our attorney and Ms. Colutz. These are financial questions, and she was on board with all of them. It may be part of our processes already, but...
What is your question, Mr. Harrison?
For a quick overview of the changes, the impact of the changes are.
The changes, as I recall, seem to capture what we currently, the processes in which we currently have, just providing more detail and clarity. So as I read two in the red and two, it's provide assurance that school system obligations are paid in timely manner and accounts are not overspent. That's our purchasing system, our authority, that there's safeguards there. All of those things are things that we do on a normal basis.
Yeah, it didn't seem like there was anything new in there, just maybe a clarification of what you actually do.
Specifics.
Yeah.
Mr. Shaw?
That was my impression as well. It didn't seem anything new. It matches what PLS is doing, so we don't have a contradiction or difference, inconsistency that we have to check every time. And as long as the finance officer was comfortable with it, then I was as well.
Okay. Can we put 8300 on the consent agenda? Yes? And 9125, participation by minority businesses? Any questions?
I think I'd like to see that on action either this month or next, because we have some significant changes to that, plus we set a percentage goal that we want to reach. And that was a question, we have 10% as our goal. How did we come up with the 10%?
I think, isn't that a standard goal? I thought that was normally...
Yeah. If you guys, that's, Tim Lauter and Kelly work with that a lot. If you guys can send us that, we can work on that. And we talked about it in the policy committee meeting and got back to that number, but it is pretty much standard, I think. Very similar. And when I say standard, I don't mean it's required, but it is similar to what most others use.
Okay, and this one also requires us to have a public hearing once we adopt it, is that correct? Or is that already in the pot? I guess it looks like it does.
Yes.
The only statement that, it gives a lot of information, and then you get down to Section C, Paragraph 2, and it says, "The level of minority participation in bidders' bids will not affect contract award decision. However, the failure to provide documentation of a good faith effort meets the board's goal, but to meet the board's goal may result in the bidding being rejected as non-responsive." So basically, we're saying in this is that it's not a criteria to disqualify a bidder as long as they respond with the sheet saying what they're providing or what minority activity is involved with them. Is that correct?
State law requires that public bodies make good faith efforts to encourage minority and minority-owned businesses, make sure that they are open to competition. Does not require any minimal level. But the contractor has to provide an affidavit, the vendor, to show these are the efforts that either have met the goal, or here are the efforts they have done to attempt to meet the goal. If they do not submit that affidavit, they are non-responsive, because that was one of the criteria in the bid. So it'd be rejected for not being responsive. But if they have 60% or 20% or 0%, will not affect the award as long as they made a good faith effort. It's still the lowest responsible responsive bidder will get the bid. So we're basically just tracking state law here, and it requires us to set a number.
Okay, Mr. Shaw, when do you recommend we have the public hearing? Before we even approve on first reading, which would mean we would have a public hearing on next week's agenda? The way it reads is after notice and public hearing, the board hereby adopts. So I'm thinking we need to, and the city does that all the time. They just insert a small public hearing. It's up on a goals. Yep.
After notice and public hearing. Yes, I would say it should be done before the first...
Reading vote.
Reading at the actual board meeting, right.
Okay.
And that can be a very short meeting, but it just depends on who speaks. So I would set it for next week, or we push it back to a month if we wanted to...
I always like to keep these moving and not have a backlog. So let's plan on doing that. Mindy, we can talk about placement on the agenda, but it would need to definitely be before the vote...
Yes.
...on policy, on this policy, on first reading. Okay, so this will definitely be action, and we'll have the public hearing before that. Okay, going down to 1700, governing principle, these are the formatting changes. Any questions on any of those? And can, I'm concerned whether to assume they would all go on consent because of the format. It's minor. Consent? Okay, so all four will go on consent? These four, the formatting changes?
On 9120, two things. Third paragraph under A, you referred to Policy 9125, but then you didn't change the policy title. And then...
It wasn't in the update, but we can do that.
And there's one more, there's one more reference. I'm trying to find it. No, under G, second paragraph, can we reference the 9125? Because that's what the goal is. Second paragraph under G, that last sentence, says, "Reports the board on progress being made towards reaching the board's goal." Well, the board's goal is what we're approving.
So you want us to fit a...
Reference to that, yes.
But normally, we don't state up there, is it at the end? Yeah, it's referred to it, in the reference, the cross-reference.
Oh, then, let's say it's, what is it, minority participation goal? Is that what that is? So let's say it's a participation goal.
Yeah, just define. Okay, so when we're looking at these four, with, in particular, this, I'll get the number. The 9120 that we would put on consent, that tells me we need to do the public hearing before the consent agenda, so that we're not approving this on consent without...
They're all tied together to that.
Correct. Okay.
I would like, excuse me, 4345 for a vote, because I wonder if they're voted on separately, please?
And you have a particular question or to look at?
Well, you know why, you know why.
Records?
Well, because if you look at 4125, it referenced my favorite policy, and it's referenced in there many times. So I would rather vote on it separately. 4345, if you go through, in its text, it references 4700 numerous times. So I would rather vote for that separately, because it references 4700 a couple of times. But then that policy, so I would rather vote on that.
Just keep in mind, we're not voting on 4700.
No, it is referenced in there numerous times. So I would rather 4345 being pulled out and voted on separately.
Okay. We'll do that.
Because it does reference that policy a couple of times in there.
Okay. Says for 6420, 21, 8300, these are all consent. 1700, 6442, and 9120 are all consent. The two actions will be 9125 and 4345. And I can give you my notes here, too. Okay, anything else on the first reading policies? Okay, we will move on to Agenda Item 5.03. Oh, wait, I skipped one. No, the second reading, 5.03, the policies for second reading.
We have had no contacts or emails, concerns about any of these policies on first reading for consent.
Consent for all? Any other? You said except for 2123 yet? Oh. Yeah, okay, yeah. Consent on 2123. 3200, instructional materials, consent. 3565, 8307, consent. Okay. 4316, student dress code. And these are all what we saw in December. Consent. And 4400, consent. Okay. Thank you. So second readings will all be consent. Thank you. Ms. Reimer's going to stay with us. For agenda item 5.04, the approval of the non-traditional school calendars. And non-traditional includes Wolfmeadow and the early college program.
Yeah, I'll start with the early college program, because it's hopefully the easiest. We had a change to their calendar for a inclement weather day. They chose to use, early on with one of the hurricanes, we chose to use the 20th of December as a makeup day. It was a teacher work day, but it was not the initial one, and so we changed that, so that they would then be able to use the 15th and 18th as some of the other inclement days. So that was the change to the calendar, and asked for board to approve as already done.
Does this still match the community college schedule?
Yes, sir, as much as possible. And they have, the other thing is, they have plenty of hours, so their high school hours are more than a regular school's hours, so they're in good shape. Yes.
But this is both college, early college programs?
Correct.
Any questions on the early college calendar? Can we put that on consent? 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 Okay.
And the next one is for Wolfmeadow Elementary School. Very similar calendar to previous years. For 1920, we've already approved our 19 and 20 calendar, and so their principal and staff need us to approve their calendar. Both their staff at school, as well as the calendar committee cabinet, and Dr. Hill worked very closely with the principal as well on this one. So a lot of people looked at this calendar before we brought it to you.
What are the changes? Any changes between current year and this year?
There are some, but most of them are just because of where a day may land, but the general idea is all exactly the same. Where a holiday may land versus where it landed last year. But overall, it's pretty much very similar. I don't know, Dr. Hill may have something that she wants to throw out that's very different, but I think it's very, very similar to the past two years.
Thank you. And any thoughts from our teacher liaison on this calendar?
I think you guys all knew, when I came
First about, first about
Is that right?
It is.
Oh. I came and spoke last year about the balanced calendar. I'm a huge fan of it. This calendar is pretty much exactly the same, is what we're doing this year. They made a couple changes to actually starting school a little bit later, to give us an additional week to take vacations, spend time with family, so I think it's great.
Any other questions?
I'm not going to waste my time with a question, because our teacher liaison has answered anything that I could have asked. Thank you.
Okay. We'll put that on consent as well? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Reimer. And next, we will move on to item 5.05, and that's just the submission of our own training hours, board members. We all did a couple hours of training in November, and get us started on a good way, and Mindy has kindly prepared all of our submissions for the School Board Association to give us the credits.
I just don't understand why David Harrison's is so light. It's only 107 kilobytes. Mine seems to be way up there.
I can't keep up with Carolyn Carpenter's.
And then ask a question.
I know I had sent you a thing checking about maybe us doing some webinar hours. Are we going to possibly do that? You know how I love my training.
Yes.
Are we going to possibly do the webinar, do the webinars?
Yes. And actually, I said we didn't have to do this during the meeting, but we can. We received, if I can find this in my email, we received a notice about a webinar that is offered on one day, and we can pay one district fee and $10 per board member to record the credit, and then anybody with a login information, and I wish I could find it, because it was a really good topic. Any with login information can log in all day that week, all day, anytime that day to do the one hour. So those of us who work during the day can look at it in the evening, or if you want to do it first thing in the morning, whatever, you know, the hours.
And I've done that in the past, and it's been, it's nice.
Yeah. It sounded like a good topic, and I wasn't prepared for that question, but let me see if I can find it. Oh, here it is, from Janine Murphy. So the topic is, one of your favorite topics, Ms. Carpenter, is the limits on the release of student information to law enforcement and other parties.
Yay! What date is that? What hour is that?
It is on January 15.
Oh, yes.
And Dr. Lauter can make it available to principals and so on, if he would like to also. So is there interest? I know I'm interested in it.
I'm interested in it, if we can take it at any time in our 24-hour
That's what it sounds like. I don't know if it's
Because in the past, they've had these cut off
That's exactly how it works. I, you know, I did it for last time, and it was nine or 10 at night while I was going through.
Which
Well, actually, the time is limited from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, but that's a pretty broad span. You can, you know, fit an hour in, and then if you do watch the whole thing, then let Mindy know. But I guess if you all, it sounds like you're interested in it, because I thought the topic was interesting, and we can all get another credit for that.
And they give us a number and everything, they call and everything. Where do we get?
They will. Once Mindy would register us, then they will provide, and then it'll be her responsibility to share it out.
I'll call her tomorrow and find out the information. But yeah, that's, that's great. The one I was interested was that one on March the night, because that was where I could get that ethics train. See, I need that two hours of ethics training, and that was the one I was interested in.
Well, let's look at the whole, the whole set of offerings for at least the spring now, and see which ones we might be interested in.
They had some real good ones.
Board members, I will send you a copy of what I just received, our training on
That is great.
Oh, you just received it?
Yes.
Excellent.
So I'm trying to
Yeah, they had a great, I mean, they had some really good, the one that I saw, they had some great, I mean, some really good, interesting, if it's the one I'm thinking about, they had some great programs they were offering, what I saw, and with some very interesting on safety and some, some real good programs that I thought would be really good.
So, board members, are you okay with putting our training hours on consent?
Consent, yes.
Thank you. And now we'll move to some items to consider for action next week. Welcome Dr. Hill to talk with us about the summer program and EOG readministration.
Good evening, Dr. Lauter, Ms. Furtin, Bob, members of the board. Tonight, I am going to bring to you an item for consideration and vote for next week. It is our summer program and EOG/EOC readministration plan.
This is different than the reading program.
It is. Yes, sir. So if you can click, I'm sorry, if you can click on the other attachment, that's the presentation. So one thing that's a little bit different this year, we have done this in the past, but we've only offered it to high schools. So if you'll recall, Mr. Alred has done this presentation typically in March in previous years, and it's an opportunity to allow students who have scored a Level 1 or a 2 on the EOG or EOC to experience some remediation and also some enrichment, and give them the opportunity to take the assessment again. One of the big comments that you hear when you talk about standardized testing is it's one day, right? So a lot of times you'll hear teachers say, like, man, they had such a great year, and this is not what we expected, and they took the test the one day and they didn't pass. And this provision gives us the opportunity to test students outside of the regular school year. So here are some specifics. It must occur outside of the regular school year, so that's when we scheduled it. As I said, it's available for students who scored a Level 1 or 2. The assessments that are available are 4th through 8th grade, English Language Arts, also known as reading, Biology and English 2. You will notice that there are no math assessments that are listed. This is a year for re norming. We have new standards and a new test for math this year, so we will not receive individual student scores until, they will be delayed. We won't receive that information until August. So therefore, since we won't have individual student scores, we won't be able to reassess them, so we won't know if they passed or not. Participation is strictly voluntary. The highest score will be reported for individual students. So if a student does not pass the test, they score Level 2. They attend this program, they retest, they score Level 4. That does happen. The 4 will be replaced on that individual student's record. It's as if the Level 2 never happened. And then finally, if you can go back one more, sorry. Finally, the readministration scores will be included in the school and the district's accountability analysis. So in other words, the better score counts for an individual student, the school, and the district. So here are the specifics. We're scheduling it for June 17 through 19. Again, that is going to be at the end of the regular school year. Now, there is one little caveat here, when we talk about our high schools, and we just talked about our non-traditional schools, early colleges, you all know, end quite earlier than that. Their last day is May 17. So we do have the opportunity to test them, but we will do that right after they end. So we will likely begin that on May 20. We just have a few logistics to work out, so I will update that for you and provide you a new written plan and our weekly wrap-up this week, and then also include that in the board docs. So that is one little caveat. But for the vast majority of our students, the program will be June 17 through 19, with the enrichment and remediation on the 17th and 18th, testing on the 19th. We are going to rely heavily on the digital resources that we have here in Cabarrus County Schools. Our curriculum and instruction team will be working on some Canvas courses, some activities that are standard-based, that students can work through during that time. We will be providing transportation to our students. Snack and lunch will be provided, and the bulk of the funding that we will need to work with, that's already in budget, is paying contracts for instructional personnel to work those three days.
I do have a quick question.
Yes.
Excuse me. Well, does that work with Wolfmeadow's timing, that their
So that is a great question. So I have worked with Ms. Brynson and also Ms. Oliphant to find out if they wanted to have their camp immediately after their school year, but Ms. Brynson and Ms. Oliphant agreed that we would include them here with the, with these dates that we have provided here. So thank you for asking that. Okay. These next couple of slides, what we've done is, we've worked with our principals and district folks, transportation here as well. What we plan to do is cluster our schools, because we do not anticipate that we will have a high number of students that participate, because we're going to do so well the first time. So for that reason, we've clustered our schools. So what you will see here is that the first school that's listed with the star will be the site at which the program will exist, and then the schools that are listed underneath will attend that satellite. So these are the sites for elementary, for transportation. We will be using our three-tiered bus transportation, so you will notice the time differences. The next slide is our middle school, and then finally is our high school. Are there any questions?
I think it looks very efficient. I think it's a great opportunity for kids and even parents to encourage their kids, that, just give that little extra push.
Will high school students be awake that early in the summer? Don't answer that.
Well, hopefully, they will be. It's the week right after they've gotten out of school, so they'll have an opportunity for that, that, I mean, there's an incentive for the students to do it, definitely.
Did we provide transportation last year in high school?
We did not. We did not. We did not provide transportation. We only offered this to high school
So that's a nice benefit.
It is a nice benefit, yes.
So how is this communicated to parents when the child makes any, well, three? And how are you going to communicate to parents this second opportunity to bump that score up?
That's a great question. So we have a communication plan that's in place. So what we are going to have to do is, after students take their third benchmark, asking teachers to take a look and see how students are performing. We certainly don't want to send messaging out to students saying that we don't think your child's going, not going to pass, so here's this other opportunity. But we do need to do that in such a way that parents are aware that there will be a second opportunity. But as soon as students take their assessment, by the very next morning, Matthew Phel and his department do an excellent job getting those individual student reports back, so we will automatically know very quickly within, by the next day, which students passed, 3, 4, 5, which students did not, 1, 2. We'll have a letter that goes out that very day to parents, inviting them to come. We will be very targeted with students. We'll be offering it to all students who scored a 1 or 2. However, we do not want to make parents feel like, you know, feel pressured that they want to, have to send their child through this, a testing experience again. We have several students that miss it by one or two questions. So those are really the students that we're trying to target for this program, even though we're going to open it for everyone.
So I have a question about the high school. So if a student, biology is still sophomore year?
Yes.
Okay. So could they potentially need to, you know, be right on the brink of passing biology and English 2?
That's another great question, yes. That is a very strong possibility. For, now, one of the caveats is, the students have to have passed the course. So if a student did not pass the test, they're not eligible to participate in this program. They have to do something completely different. But for students that scored a Level 1 or 2, we will leave that up to the school to make that determination, which one would be to the most benefit for that student, but they will only have the opportunity to take one assessment.
Okay. So maybe the highest success
Yes.
possibility.
That's right. Yes. One thing that I do want to make very clear, sometimes it's confusing the difference between growth and proficiency. This plan only counts for proficiency, right? So pass, fail. Our growth is only calculated on the first administration of the EOG. That's why it's so important that we all do our very best, that first assessment, because that's what's calculated for growth. This just gives an additional opportunity for the proficiency score.
But a good opportunity.
Yes, absolutely.
Any questions? Okay. And you said the money was budgeted.
Yes, it is budgeted. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. So does that need to be on the action agenda? Because I believe we have to approve.
Yes, you do have to approve it. And like I mentioned, the one specific that's missing in this plan that you have in front of you right now is the early college. So I'll make those date changes and send it to you in the weekly wrap-up. We'll pop that in board docs for you, and yes, it does need your approval and your signature.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Board members, that's the end of our action agenda. I will now take a motion to convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 1183, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 1186, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer employee or prospective public officer employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge or grievance by or against an individual public officer employee, and to review personnel recommendations. A motion to approve?
I'll make, no. Second.
So who made the motion? Holly, Ms. Grimsley? Motion made by Ms. Grimsley, second by Mr. Walter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes 7-0. We'll say goodnight to our viewing audience, and thank you for those who are here for the meeting in person, and the board will now convene in closed session. Thank you.